667-25 William and Gina Jacks. Permission to leave pool patio having side yard of 4.7 feet instead of required 6 feet. Residence B District 278 Cluster, west side of Fallen Leaf Road, 152.31 feet north of Gainesboro Road, Oakdale.
Good evening. Diana Laspisa with Moreno Expediting Services, P.O. Box 39. Bethpage, New York, 11714. Here on behalf of the property owners. We were here before. The property owners had obtained a building permit to install an inground swimming pool back in January of this year. At the time, they didn't finalize the patio layout with the contractor. We got the permit. The pool was installed. I think what actually happened, though, the pool contractor is aware of the six-foot setback typically for Islet. However, the fencing in that area is slightly off of the property line. So I think there was a little error during construction and they perhaps measured off of the fencing, which is where they're differentiating from the 1.3 feet.
Fair enough. Planning, any comments on this?
No comment.
Is there any questions from the board?
No questions.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? Okay, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Second, all in favor? All right, application's granted.
Thank you. Application number 668-25 Tracy Wallace and Christina McMahon. Permission to leave pool patio having rear yard of 2 feet instead of required 6 feet. Residence A District, south side of Bethesda Lane, 317.85 feet west of Broadway Avenue, Seville.
Hi there. Christina McMahon, property owner. Our pool company Dingman Pools and Spa made an error when they submitted the original plans. They said they forgot to include the patio in that. So when it came time for the permit, it was denied due to this issue. So they filed a variance on our behalf. And I'm here.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Any comments? Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? Take a motion, please.
Make a motion to grant the application.
Take your second, please.
Second.
All in favor? Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 669-25 Thomas Federuso and Tonya Latanzio. Permission to leave pool patio having side yard of 3.6 feet instead of required 6 feet. Residence A District, north side of Matthews Road, 349.79 feet east of Windmill Road, Oakdale.
At the time, we had the pool installed. We did not know that.
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thomas Federuso, 262 Matthews Road. I reside there as my residence. My wife, Tonya.
And you're here just on the pool patio? You're here for the pool patio?
Correct.
Okay. Planning, any comments on this one?
No comment.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to grant the application.
Second.
Second, please. All in favor? All right, application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 670-25 Locrecchio Family Irrevocable Trust Nicole Anderson and Katie Locrecchio, trustees. Permission to leave walkway having side yard of 3 feet and patio having side yard of 0.2 feet instead of required 4 feet each. Residence A District, south side of Carp Drive, 548.33 feet west of Carlton Avenue, Islet Terrace.
All right, Daniel Locrecchio, 10 Carp Drive, owner.
Okay. And you're here on just the walkway and the patios, right?
Correct.
Okay, planning, any comments on this?
No comment.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No questions.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? Okay, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to grant the application.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor? All right, application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 671-25 Leslie Chaken. Permission to leave 6-foot fence on property line not having required setback of 10 feet. Residence B District, southeast corner of Keith Lane and Merritt Street, West Islet.
I'm Leslie Chaken, 517 Keith Lane. I'm the property owner.
And you're here on the fence?
Yes.
Okay. Planning, any comments on this one?
Yeah, so this one, it's not quite meeting the current exception, but the lot is small enough that it should fall within what we would normally consider.
What is the size of the lot?
Sorry, I have one question.
125.
How big is the lot?
It's 12.5. We're actually thinking potentially changing this exception as well, but that's still being decided.
I thought we were at 11.5.
Currently, the exception is 11.250. I can't guarantee anything, but we're currently trying to change that exception to be up to now 1,300. So.
13,000?
13. Yeah, 13,000.
So rather than wait for legislation, we'll just go ahead and do it, is that what?
Well, 12.5.
We don't need no sneaky law. If that's the thought process of planning, so you want to get out in the head of the board.
I'm not the one that sent them here, but I think it would be a bit weird to deny them for something that we're expecting is going to change soon.
The word is de minimis, I think you also, right?
It will be de minimis. It's not de minimis yet. It's prede minimis.
It's getting there.
It will be completely conforming, actually.
We look for him just in your corner. Exactly.
Yeah, this is holding up my CO, so.
Oh, you better do it immediately.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to grant the application.
Second.
All in favor? All right, application's granted.
Thank you.
Vincent Best. Application number 672-25 The State of Peter M. Dryer and Gail E. Dryer, John C. Dryer, executor, and Stephen A. and Mary E. Miles. Permission to leave 5-foot fence on front and second front property lines not having required setback of 15 feet and 10 feet, and shed having side yard of 1.4 feet instead of required 2 feet. Residence A District, southeast corner of Bayport Avenue and Academy Street, Bayport.
Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Board. Salvato Costilla from Permit to Us, 338 Jericho Turnpike, Siasa, New York, 11791. I'm here on behalf of the dryers. As you stated, for the fence, it's a three-tier stockade. It's not a stockade fence. It's a horse fence. It's been there since prior to him buying the house in 1973. And the shed is 1.4, which requires a 2-front setback.
Can you call that an estate? I wouldn't call that an estate. It's like a farm fence.
The fence is 50 years old?
Granted, he's replaced sections over the years, but when he bought the home in 1973, that fence existed and replaced as he went along.
So, yeah, for this one, the intention for us to have these fence setbacks is so that it's not really imposing on people in the roadway. I think considering that this is just a post and rail fence, it's very open. You can see straight through it. I don't really think in terms of the intent of what we're trying to prevent that this would be what we are trying to prevent. So I don't have an issue with it because it's a post and rail fence specifically.
I'd say that a live fence, but the fence will live forever. That's right. Yeah, right.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Application number 673-25 Maximilian and Tonye Chemnitzer. Permission to leave generator having side yard of 1.3 feet instead of required 2 feet, and pergola having rear yard of 2 feet instead of required 4 feet. Residence AA District, north side of Truce Drive, 125 feet west of Oak Neck Road, West Islet.
Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Board. My name's Tina Weber, representing Boulder Fluga Architects. Our office is located at 85 East Main Street in Bay Shore, New York. I'm here tonight with the homeowner, Max Chemnitzer. Earlier this year, we filed a building permit for an addition, interior alterations and roof over. Zoning issued a conditional approval noting that the existing pergola and generator did not comply and would need to be addressed before a CVO could be granted. Construction is now complete. Final inspection has been approved, and we are here to satisfy all the requirements so the Chemnitzers can get their CVO. The Chemnitzers purchased the property in 2015, and the pergola was already in place at that time. The generator was installed in 2020 during the uncertain times of COVID. Following a blackout in the area, Mr. Chemnitzer, who was working from home, needed a reliable power source to continue his work. To our knowledge, there have no complaints from the neighbors regarding each structure. And, you know, we respectfully submit that the existing structures are consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and do not have any impact. I'll take questions from the board.
Thank you. Any questions at this time?
No questions.
No. Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? Take a motion, please.
Motion to grant the application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application number 674-25 Board of Fire Commissioners, Hop Hock Fire District. Permission to leave ground sign including electronic LED message center having overall sign area of 29.4 square feet instead of permitted 12 square feet exceeding maximum depth of 16 inches. Residence A and B District, south side of Terry Road, 318.6 feet east of Parkway Gardens Boulevard, Hop Hock.
Good evening. My name's Arthur Rast from San Luizki Architects, representing the owner in this matter. Is this better? Would you like me to repeat myself?
No.
Okay. All I will say is that this is an existing display board that's used both for emergencies and for just, you know, public information and such. It's consistent with pretty much any firehouse that you would go or anywhere, you know, in the country, let alone the county and whatnot. And we would just look to get relief from this, essentially.
Planning, any comments on this?
There's not really much to say about it. I would agree with them. It's pretty consistent with most firehouses that I've seen.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? All right, take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Second, all in favor? All right, application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 675-25 Eugene and Erin Lightte. Permission to erect roofed-over patio with retractable screens leaving side yard of 12 feet instead of required 14 feet. Residence A District, east side of Ocean Avenue, 652 feet south of Rockaway Street, West Islet.
Good evening. Kelly Bennett, 1257 Udall Road, Bay Shore, New York, 11706.
What are the retractable screens? So they can use it in the summer and not have the mosquitoes?
It's called a life room. It's done by four seasons. So they're retractable screens. Essentially, you could use them different times of the year. It's proposed over an existing patio where it's seeking relief for the existing side yard setback of 12 feet. We're required to have 14 feet. We're nowhere near lot coverage on the property side, so that is the only relief that we're requesting.
Thank you. Planning, any comments?
As you said, they're maintaining the same setback as their existing house, so.
Bless you. Second.
All in favor? All right.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Application number 676-25 Anthony LaCava Jr. and Dawn Acapnetis LaCava. Permission to erect one-story addition 20.5 by 33.8 irregular, leaving side yard of 9.9 feet instead of required 14 feet, total side yards of 26.23 feet instead of required 28 feet, to leave shed having side yard of 2.4 feet and rear yard of 3.2 feet instead of required 4 feet each, and 4-foot fence in driveway site triangle exceeding permitted height of 3 feet. Residence B District, south side of First Street, 225 feet east of Oak Neck Road, West Islet.
Good evening, Chairman and Members of the Board. I'm Michael Dunn, the architect for LaCavas at 256 Orinoco Drive in Bright Waters, New York, 11718. So it is an existing one-story house. We are proposing a one-story addition, keeping in line with the side yard setback there. So we're asking for that 9.9 instead of 14. And so that decreases the overall side yard setbacks as well. I think there was a variance approved for the shed already, and they just never closed it out. And they said they would comply with the site triangle for the driveway fence, so they would lower that to 3 foot. So that complies.
So you're continuing that how far? Lower it how far?
20 feet. I did speak with planning, and they said it seemed like it was in keeping in line with the neighborhood.
I guess that's my cue, right? Okay. So, yeah, this is, um, this side yard was actually created by the appeals board in a subdivision in '87. At the time, a 10-foot side yard in Residence B was conforming. So they're kind of keeping in line with what I believe was the intent of that grant, maintaining that. The only conditions put on it at the time was it was supposed to remain one story, which they are doing, and it was supposed to be setback at least 50 feet from the road, which they are continuing to do. So I think it's pretty consistent, not only with the neighborhood, but with previous board decisions.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Application number 677-25 Stephen Sussman. Permission to leave 6-foot fence having front yard of 1.9 feet instead of required 15 feet. Residence AA District, southeast corner of Island Boulevard and Evergreen Boulevard, Bohemia.
Hi, good evening, Members of the Board. I'm Stephen Sussman, owner of 20 Island Boulevard for the last 25 years. I'm requesting permission to leave a 6-foot fence that you guys are requesting to me to drop it down to 4 feet. The fence has been there forever. It's just a wooden fence, and I replaced it with a beautiful PVC fence. And the first day I put it up, both of my neighbors, actually three of my neighbors, came over and said. Two of them came over, and one of them called me and said, what a beautiful fence it is. What a beautiful color. It makes it look so nice because it hides the bottom of a berm. A berm is sitting about 5 feet in towards my house, and it covers the whole bottom of the berm. So now all you see is a fence and these beautiful evergreen trees, which I think I provided pictures.
Nick, are you going to tell us that the town board in 2057 is going to up it to?
I am not going to say anything like that, no.
Unfortunately, you don't have 6-foot fences.
Okay, but the, uh, one of the issues is, is that this is not my, my front yard. It shows, according to the town, it shows that 20 Island Boulevard is the front of my house.
So I can actually speak to that, because I know we talked about that today. So by all accounts, in terms of practical use, you'd be right. Evergreen is definitely your front yard in any practical sense. The reason they chose Island Boulevard to be your primary frontier is because historically it was, which you already knew. But the reason why that's important is because previous board decisions were based on that being the front yard. And if they were to change it now, that would invalidate some previous decisions that were made. It would actually end up being worse for you because other things that were built conforming would now not be conforming anymore. So it would end up being worse for you, actually.
Yes.
It wouldn't just be the fence anymore.
I mean, I moved my mailbox because I had to because it was so far away from us.
Again, I agree. For all, you know, practical purposes, Evergreen is your primary front. Although even if this was secondary front, it would be 10 instead of 15, but it still wouldn't be conforming.
Unfortunately for us, and I guess for you, is that we have an exception, but your property is 100% greater than the exception.
Okay.
Way too large. I guess that's a good thing.
I understand that. Another issue is, my daughter's in the house. She's 24 years old, beautiful daughter, and she's scared because all these cars decide that Island Boulevard is a place to hang out at night. We find constant, we find vodka bottles, we find alcohol bottles, we find beer bottles. We always find cars out there. They're just smoking pot out there. It's just terrible. It's like a, it's like a, it's a go-to place for the teenagers. And my daughter's scared, to be honest with you, and my wife is too. And that's one of the reasons we put this fence up, to hide this craziness going on on Island Boulevard. Well. I did. Right behind the fence is a big 4-foot berm. I don't know if you see pictures of it with beautiful Alboradis. Okay. So what would I have to do? Knock this fence down to 4 feet? Knock it down to 4 feet? Or remove it? Did somebody say that? Okay, so 10 feet now? It's. Okay, so the fence either has to stay where it is, and I have to knock it down to 4 feet? And? Or move it back so it's 10 feet? So now where is, I'm a little confused because where is it now?
Right now, it's, I believe it says 1.9. I, that is a bit of a practical difficulty to just move it because I think it would end up on your berm.
It would. That's the issue.
But.
That's the whole problem. I got 48 Alboradis. I am there to be in the neighborhood. I got the nicest house in the neighborhood. All right. All right, so that's the verdict then. I'm, I guess I'm. I'm, I'm sorry?
Decision whether to go to 4 feet or 10 feet. You know, that'd be up to you. You have the choice.
So right now, it's sitting at 4 feet, so I'm not confused.
No.
No, right now, it's about 2 feet away from the property line.
It's 2 feet, and it has to go 10 feet.
Right. Or you have to reduce the height.
Yeah, what they're suggesting is that they'll give you 10 instead of 15.
Right.
Or you could just reduce the height of the fence to 4 feet in height in order to leave it where it currently is.
Okay, so let me just make sure. You said the fence, because I don't want to move it in the wrong spot.
Well, we're going to issue your decision.
Yeah, you're going to see.
You're going to let me know?
Yeah.
Okay. So right now, you said 4 feet, though, right? Just so I know.
4 feet is code. That's the.
I mean, you said it was, where was the fence?
1.9 to be specific.
1.9? Okay. And it has to be moved to 10 feet?
Correct. Based on their decision.
Or knock it, or leave it where it is and bring it down to 4 feet.
And reduce the height.
Okay. I guess that's the decision, huh?
Not there yet. Does anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? Okay. And I'll take a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to deny the application at 15 feet, but approve it at 10 feet.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now, what would have to happen? I would move the fence, or I would knock it down to 4 feet, or move the fence, and then what? Call you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll come back to it.
That's it?
You'll be conforming, and then when they go.
I'll be conforming.
Right.
Well, the third option is you can move.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Application number 678-25 Justin Volpe and Alyssa Sinenski. Permission to erect second-story addition 21.3 by 21.3, leaving side yard of 11.1 feet, front porch 5 foot by 18.3, leaving side yard of 12.3 feet, and one-story addition 14 by 21.3, leaving side yard of 11.9 feet instead of required 14 feet each, total side yards of 23 feet instead of required 28 feet, and to leave 4-foot fence in driveway site distance triangle exceeding permitted height of 3 feet. Residence B District, west side of Durham Road, 150 feet south of Marion Street, Seville.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Angelo Carbo Hall. I am representing Inspire Design Group Architects here for my client, Mr. Volpe. Tonight, we're here seeking to construct a 277-square-foot rear.
I think that's a big problem. I think the site triangle, why don't you address that first?
The site triangle, yeah. We're looking to maintain the, the 4-foot-high fence. If.
We don't allow intrusions into the site. Danger.
Yeah, we're actually, so the fence is actually the adjacent property owners. But I have spoke to the owner, and we are looking to, we could speak to the owner and, and.
Wait. If it's the next neighbor's property, we have no authority. Only the search and no property.
There is a portion of the fence that falls into the.
On your property, we have control over, and we're not going to allow it to intrude into the site.
Yeah, that's a solid fence.
The neighbors, we have no control over.
Yeah.
Planning, what do you got on the fence?
So we have a survey.
What do you, do you know whose fence it is by any chance?
Um, I mean, it does look like it might be the neighbor's fence, but it crosses over the property line, so that's.
Correct.
I think that's what he's trying to say.
It's the neighbor's fence, and there's like a .1 foot that it encroaches at the very corner. It's hard to tell if you have a copy of the survey, but I have additional copies if you need one. It's, I mean, if, just looking at it, we might be talking about a 1% that it encroaches onto our property.
On your property encroaches, we can't.
Yeah, so we'd be willing to cut back. We talked to the, to the adjacent property owner, and we'll see how we can, we make it so that it's not encroaching onto our property.
Yeah, it does seem like the best option for you, just have them remove whatever is encroaching.
Yeah.
And then it's not your client's problem anymore.
Correct.
I don't think the addition is a huge effect.
No, the, yeah, the addition that we're proposing is the rear addition. We're just looking to stick parallel to the existing house. So we are looking to just, for the rear addition, we're looking to maintain it's 2.1 feet for relief.
Okay. Yeah. Who's got a motion on this one?
Dan.
Dan, any motion? Does anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? I'm sorry. Okay. Take a motion. Deny the fence. You deny the fence.
I'll make a motion to deny the site triangle and grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you again, Members of the Board.
Application number 679-25 Joseph and Patricia Coladonato. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islet Town Code Section 68-602. Residence AAA District, north side of Cardinal Lane, 149.69 feet east of Quail Run, East Islet.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Coladonato. This is Joe Coladonato. We're the property owners.
Are you here on the accessory apartment?
Yes.
Planning, any comments on this?
No comment.
Any questions from the board? Is anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? No? Okay. I'll take a motion, please.
I'll take a motion, Chairman, against the application for a period of 3 years.
All in favor? Three-year period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Look at that, 6:30. Application number 680-25 Mohammed Lukman Hakim. Permission to leave roofed-over entrance platform having front yard of 14 feet and second-story addition having front yard of 17 feet instead of required 25 feet each, and to leave shed having rear yard of 0.5 feet instead of required 2 feet. Residence B District, west side of Redmond Avenue, 100 feet south of Edwin Street, Bay Shore.
Good evening. My name is Mansour. I am representing Mohammed Hakim. So the. Mansour Ahmed. I am representing Mohammed Hakim.
Your address, please, sir?
Sorry?
What is your address?
Yes, so the, first of all, the shed, those were at the back.
What is your address?
Address. 1471 Ocean Avenue, Bohemia.
Thank you.
So one of the requests is, you know, the yards, right, at the back. Those were moved to 2 feet as well, as required. But we were, you know, asking for the permission for the front, you know, which was, you know, the roof. Yeah, roofed-over entrance, which is 14 feet and something, and the first one is 17 feet instead of 25 feet.
Okay.
So we bought as it is, so we just need the permission on this.
Planning, any comments on this?
I'm just going to bring up a picture here that kind of shows what this addition looks like. It's this little thing at the top here. And honestly, I don't even think it's really accurate to say that it's a 17-foot front yard for that. It's a 17-foot front yard for the house, but the addition is set further back than that. Regardless, based, it's a very small, like, little dormer addition on the top. Barely anything.
That's the only addition?
I believe so, yeah. That's the addition right at the top there.
So is that the addition that you're talking about?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then they have a front-like entrance platform at 14.
Anyone else like to be heard in this matter?
Thank you.
Application number, oh, is anybody here on the application of 681-25 Elaine Price Lyons? We've had a request to adjourn that? Okay. That application has been adjourned, and currently, it's an open date. Application number 682-25, Faithful Farms LLC. Permission to renew ZBA number eight-fourty-eight-22 for a period of two years pursuant to Isletown Code Section twelve-dash-twenty-seven and twelve-dash-twenty-eight. Residence AAA District, north side of Awwood Avenue, one thousand eighty-seven point one-seven feet east of Connectwood Avenue, Central Islet.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric J. Russo, Van Branchez-Wiak and Russo, with offices at one-forty Main Street, Seville, New York, one-one-seven-eight-two. On behalf of Faithful Farms, my client, we're here tonight for a very simple application to renew the special permit from two years ago as requested and required by your town code. I know that I believe you have the binder with information that was provided to you in 2022, which showed the subject premises, and I've just provided you with a new binder which shows everything that is going on on the site as I visited last Saturday, and nothing has changed. If you look at the plantings that front the street, you can see that you can barely see what's going on inside of the property on the other side of the arbivide that has grown up there. If you have questions, I'll be happy to review them with you, but pursuant to sixty-eight-four-sixteen, sixty-eight-four-seventeen, twelve-twenty-six, and twelve-twenty-seven A of the Isletown Code, we're here just asking again for a renewal of the special permit for two years. I've been fine. I've had a little hip surgery, but I'm doing fine. Thank you. You're looking well, sir. No, they wanted me to get on the horses on Saturday. I said no.
We had him on a mule. We had him on a mule.
Yes, yes. I'm here to be cordial and pleasant and wonderful, and it's a very simple application. I don't want to take up the board's time. If you have questions, I'd be happy to respond. The property owner is also here, and nothing else has changed. I'm sorry?
It's actually a vehicle, called a mule. Not a mule, mule.
I have no comment.
I'll step back. Thank you.
Susan Pellegrino, eighty-five Deer Path Road. Good evening, board. I did submit some information into the file before this, and there's some issues that I'm concerned about. I would agree with the attorney that the screening provides a beautiful privacy for the property, but I'm concerned about the employees that work on the property. A few months ago, there was music being played very loudly. I work frequently from home, and I could literally hear inside my, my office, music. I went over there three times and spoke with different employees, and each one of them seemed to be pretty agreeable, until the fourth occasion, when one of the employees got very aggressive and the police were called. And the police had a long conversation with them, and then it continued. I've been in this neighborhood for close to fifty years. There's not a peep that's come out of this property before this, this, this owner. So that, that's a concern for me. This is residential. They were playing music, I mean, during hours of operation, you know, eight-thirty to four-thirty, five-thirty. So I'm concerned about that. I also showed a photo of accessory structure, like one of those nylon things that is not permissible. And then, thirdly, you should have foils, and according to the building department, there are no equine permits on file. And according to what they gave me, there haven't been any on file since two thousand and two. There's still, well, the, yeah, yeah, right, you're, you're correct. Well, I don't know why they don't have permits on file, then. I mean, that's the building department's, they all have to, everyone who owns a horse has to have the number of horses on file. They pay a fee, and that has to be on record. So, if you granted it or not, I mean, I understand that, but it's not on file.
So just to clarify your question, Chris, eh, we granted the special permit, and then, as far as I understand, each horse, the individual horse, needs its own permit?
Ah, I see, okay.
Yes, um, yeah, mm-hmm, that's what I mean, yeah.
I just asked our, I mean, legal counsel on the other side of the case. What do we do?
And we will find out. Permit, and that it... I don't know this, the answer.
We could make it the decision subject, too, absolutely.
Because of the town having the code and...
Correct.
They're seeking a variance or a special exception, and they may not be compliant.
Correct. I don't think it's something the board should not address.
Right.
So, making this subject to the proper licensing or permitting of the, each horse, is definitely something that we can do.
Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, if you'd be kind enough to look at the binder I gave you, there is a permit that is there for ten horses. The permit, as you can see in the binder, there is a seal for all of the structures on the property, and the permit that was there was issued as of September second, twenty-twenty-five, for two-fifty-two Awwood Avenue to Richmond Fleisch, Richard Fleishman, for ten horses. And the permit is, I submitted it to you, and you have it in front of you this evening. Yes, and there are ten horses there, and the way the application goes, you fill out the permit application, you list all five horses, and there were two documents that submitted for a total of ten, paid the necessary fee of one thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars, and the permit was issued on September second by the building department. You have a copy of the permit, and... It's right here.
Nine fifteen was when the, the information was received.
Nine-two. And I do have a copy of the foil request, but... There is.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not on file. I mean, that's, you know, so what's...
Okay, so this foil may predate the permit.
Why, but why wouldn't they have a permit for ten horses that they were in two thousand and twenty-two, like you just said?
There was a permit issued after your first hearing in twenty-twenty-two. I don't know why the building department didn't provide it, but we did get a... Correct. It has to be renewed.
We don't have control of the noise. You'll just have to call, stand, keep, that's the term of the filing.
And the accessory structure, the accessory structure. Picture, yes, it's the oval, that oval-like net thing. Excuse me?
Yes, I was going to answer the question about the structure, but I have a copy of the photo. It's a tent. And that's... The blue structure's a tent. It's temporary. Well, it didn't...
Okay, I'm just, I'm bringing that to mind. I'm just bringing that...
Understood. Yeah, I just wanted to bring that to the attention, but I, but I am concerned because, I mean, this is foiled information. So whether, whether, you know, you, you have a valid permit or what have you, you know, the point that is I'm foiling something, and it's taking two months to get the information, and it's not accurate, so...
That may be, I understand that may be true, but we're not the foil department. We're not the...
Understood.
It may be an issue, but it's not a core, and we have no foil card.
Right, but, but this could be just a timing issue.
Yeah, right.
The foil was accurate when it was responded to, and then the permit was issued, you know? Sometimes things in the, it's like they're in the mail.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but this is, this is for current, so this, this would have reflected a two thousand and twenty-two permit, like the attorney just said. If they had permits in two thousand and twenty-two, then that would be on file.
That should be on file.
And that's not on file. That's not what I got, so, I mean, I have all the information with them, but if I need to take it up with them, I'll take it up with them. But, you know, I don't like to present information that's not accurate.
No, I understand that.
I, I get that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, mister? Oh. You're all very famous, so maybe that's why. I know it's not me. I have nothing else. We would respectfully ask that you grant the renewal of the special permit. And again, it's good for a year. We have to renew it again at the end of the year. Not yours, meaning with the town building department, because it's a one-year permit. It is indicated on the permit document I gave you. It expires in twenty-twenty-six. Thank you. We appreciate it. Have a good evening. Thank you, and a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, board.
Application number 683-25, Kelly Aviles. Permission to leave shed eight-point-four by twenty on rear property line, not having required setback of four feet, and finished basement with plumbing fixtures, having no interior access into main dwelling in violation of Isletown Code Section sixty-eight dash three, definitions of family, Sections two, L. Residence B District, southeast corner of MK Street and Eighteenth Avenue, Bay Shore.
Hello, board. How are you? Good evening.
Your name and address, please?
Kelly Aviles, fifteen-twenty-seven MK Street, Bay Shore, New York, one-one-seven-zero-six.
All right, and, and the, the shed is not really a concern, but the basement, what's the purpose of the basement?
The, um, it's the movie room, so that, we made it a movie room in my house, mm-hmm.
And, and you can only get to it by going outside of the house?
Correct. Yeah, because I, I didn't, I didn't really know what to do with that space, so I just made it a movie room.
And you got no one living there?
Um, it's just my daughter. Like, we all live together. It's my house.
So it's, it's, is that considered an accessory apartment, or is that...
No, there's no kitchen in it. There's no longer a kitchen in the area, right?
No.
Okay. That answers the question about the basement, right?
So ironically, if there were a kitchen, and if you wanted it to be an accessory apartment, we would require you to separate it from the main house, but because you don't want it to be an accessory apartment, or you don't want to have a second kitchen in it, then we require it to be connected to the main house. We, the code, not the zoning board. Just explaining to them, really.
Thank you.
I don't know. Who are you guys talking?
It's not a variance. It's a use variance. She, they made the wrong problem. They made it a use variance because...
It can be used for habitable. It just has to be connected to the main house. It's like a...
The staircase inside the house is not...
There isn't one. No, I don't have one inside the house. It's, the steps are outside, and you go down, and then the door.
At one time, the house had a staircase. You said that was like very short or something, right?
No, it didn't. It had like a little, like a little flap you would open, and you could just, it was like a hole, and you would just kind of get down there that way.
Oh, okay.
But it was never a staircase.
Like a chute, kind of?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
A chute on yourself.
And you don't want to have a tenant. You don't want an accessory apartment?
No.
So what the board is discussing, as I think I explained to you at the office, is it's really statutory. They, it's not a, the way they see it, it's not a variance. You're not stretching anything.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you're asking to have structures that the code says would violate the code.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what they're talking about.
So was this initially a crawl space that they, that they monoferced?
We're saying at one time, your house apparently had a crawl space, and then at some point, that space must have gotten deeper.
Mm-hmm. But I, when I got the house, it was like that. Like, I didn't do it.
How long have you had the house?
Since twenty thirteen.
What issue are you going to do? Euphony?
Yeah, but how do we euphony?
Okay. So she took out the second kitchen. She built and applied for the rec space in the basement, built these big exterior, like crank-out windows.
Can you explain to the board the process that you went through in order to turn it into habitable space, including the conversion of your smaller window, windows into bigger windows?
Oh, yeah, they did ask me to put in a egress window, so that's what I put in as well in the, in the bedroom of the, of the basement.
Right, habitable space?
Yeah, because of fire.
Yeah, I had to enlarge that window. It was a, it was a little one, so now it's a big one.
We're pretty certain this house was built on crawl space, and at some point it got...
So, you had a primary inspection, a first inspection, and the building department gave you a checklist of things you would need to do. You did that work. You called for the last inspection, and they said, well, you, you still have this problem of an exterior entrance with no interior access to the main house.
Mm-hmm, correct, yes. I don't, I don't think there's any way to even put a staircase to the basement. I don't have any room.
Yeah, we have to reserve.
Yeah.
We have to try to figure it out.
Okay.
Is anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? I'm, I'm going to take a motion to reserve then.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor? All right. We're going to reserve the decision. May I have a look into this, and we'll get back to you?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
It says, ready, plumbing fixtures having no interior access.
Definition of family, sixty-eight dash three. I can't tell if it's an L or an I.
That's a complex one.
We don't have a lot more.
We do. We have a pa- a full page.
Oh, yeah?
Application number 684-25.
I'm so sorry. Can I just say one more thing? I don't know. I had pictures. Do you want to see the pictures?
Uh, we wanted a picture of...
Do you want to give us a phone?
Yeah.
Keep, keep...
No.
Show us some of it. We have to keep the phones, so we put it in the...
Oh, gotcha, so...
Yeah, you could, we, what Austin really called you about today was the picture of the shed attached to the garage, because we didn't get to discuss that at all.
Okay.
Because the other part was so compelling and interesting.
Okay.
But we wanted to see the shed attached to the garage. So you can email that to our office tomorrow.
Okay, I will do that then. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Application number 684-25, Thomas Zaleski. Permission to erect two-story dwelling, leaving floor area ratio of 29.99% instead of permitted 25%. Residence B District, west side of Tuttle Street, 140 feet south of Terry Boulevard, Holbrook.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Just wanted to introduce myself really quick. Tom Zaleski, this is my beautiful wife, Sam. Currently, I work for the New York City Police Department, 16 years as a sergeant. My wife is a physician assistant for St. Francis Hospital for Cardiothoracic Unit. Just wanted to give you...
Can we get your address, Mr. Zaleski?
Uh, I'm sorry, 1216 Tuttle Street, Holbrook, New York.
Can you just one second? What do you have on this planning?
It's very consistent with the board normally grants and, yeah, so I think you're going to be fine.
Does anyone else would like to be heard? Okay.
Make an application to approve the, make a motion to approve the application.
All in favor?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Application number 685-25, Anthony Caldara Jr. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isletown Code Section 68-602. Is anybody here on the application of Anthony Caldara? Oh, I can't believe he would miss this.
All right, we'll second call it.
Oh, my gosh.
Second call.
He was so interested in this hearing. Application number 686-25, Nicholas Martucci. Permission to leave detached garage 20.1 by 24.2 with attached shed 7.7 by 19.5, having side yard of 5.7 feet instead of required 10 feet. Shed with roofed over deck on side property line, not having a required setback of four feet, and chicken coop having side yard of 6.2 feet instead of required 10 feet. Residence AA District, south side of Floral Park Street, 600 feet west of Green Lawn Avenue, Islet Terrace.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Lowkenees from Lowdown Expediting. My office is located at 131 Berkeley Place in Massapequa, New York. I am here this evening on behalf of my clients Nicholas and Melissa Martucci, who are the owners and occupants of the subject property located at 54 Floral Park Street. We are here this evening as a result of an application filed with the building department for a proposed second-story addition. And as a result of that request, the Martuccis were made aware that there were several items on their property that did not have a permit. They did purchase the property in 2016. A compliance permit has been filed since then under application number 234518, which is awaiting approval. Of these items, we are looking for permission to leave the detached garage. Of these items, we are looking for permission to leave the detached garage, having a side yard setback of 5.7 feet, where 10 feet is required, for which we are looking for relief of 4.3 feet. The shed is attached to the detached garage and as a result of adding the shed to the detached garage, it made the square footage over 500 square feet, which is causing the noncompliance with a 10-foot setback. When the garage was initially built, it did not have the shed and only needed a four-foot setback. Mister and Mrs. Martucci were unaware that adding the shed would change the zoning compliance. I did speak with Mister and Mrs. Martucci prior to the hearing this evening, after speaking with the town, and if it would appease the board, they did not have a problem with removing the shed so that they would be compliant. In addition, there is also a shed with a roof over, having a side yard setback of zero feet instead of the required four feet. And lastly, we are requesting relief for the chicken coop, having a side yard setback of 6.2 feet instead of 10 feet, for which we are requesting relief of 3.8 feet. We have spoken with both the neighbors on the abutting sides of the properties and they have no issues with the location of any of the items. Mister Martucci did make it clear that the, many of the structures on the property were there when he purchased it in 2016. They were dilapidated. He simply fixed some of them up, but the majority of them were there, with the exception of the shed that was added to the detached garage. As for the chicken coops, I mentioned that the homeowner have had several conversations with the neighbors regarding the projects and they've asked about the chicken coops themselves. They don't have any issues as the property is quite deep and the location of the coops is pretty far from the neighboring properties and there is the wooded area between. Those are our only requests. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, as she was bringing up, the, the only reason the garage has a setback issue here is because the shed is unfortunately attached and that brings it as one combined accessory structure over 500 square feet. And that she pointed out correctly, if they remove the shed section of it, the garage itself will be completely conforming. So that'll eliminate the need for that variance.
I, I mean, ultimately, would they like to keep it, of course, but if it would, you know, if they don't have a choice, then absolutely.
It is unfortunately something that we have seen before us multiple times. People do these additions after the fact and it's, it takes a conforming structure out of conformance. Roof over shed, no issue. The chicken coop, not something that is normally granted by the board, although I would agree, it's about 150 feet away from the neighbor's actual house. These are incredibly deep lots. So I don't actually think it's really a noxious use. Because that's normally the concern of the board, which is why they take much a harsher stance.
So I think they've moved it as far, I was there at the property. They, they have moved it once before, before the survey was done, and they moved it to the other side because it was even closer. But I, I think it would be, I, they, they don't want to have to move it again. No, it's, it's like a wooden structure. Everything else is good to stay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night. Happy holidays.
No, exactly. Application number 687-25, Joseph Barcia and Carissa Cardona Barcia. Permission to erect detached garage 18 by 30, leaving front yard of six feet instead of required 20 feet, side and rear yards of four feet instead of required 10 feet each. To leave front yard occupancy of 58% instead of permitted 40%, and four-foot fence in driveway sight distance triangle exceeding permitted height of three feet. Residence B District, northeast corner of Rockaway Street and Connectwood Avenue, Islet Terrace.
Joseph Barcia, 263 Rockaway Street, Islet Terrace, Wollonee 752. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Appeals, members of the community, thank you for taking the time to hear my appeal regarding previously implemented changes and a proposed change to my property at 263 Rockaway Street in the town of Islet. I'll provide a brief summary of my request and the supporting facts, and I'm happy to answer any questions once I'm finished. My, my appeal concerns three items. In all instances, the root cause is the original lot size, which is 5,500 square feet, smaller than the town required 7,500 square feet. When the home was constructed, a reduced setback of eight feet instead of 15 feet was granted. The town of Islet Board of Appeals approved this variance on March 28, 1972, item number 235, by a vote of four to zero. First item up, front yard occupancy 58% versus the 40% permitted. When the home was built, a single-car driveway was standard. Today, two-car households are the norm. Expanding the driveway benefits both my family and the town. Prevents cars from blocking the sidewalks or parking on the grass. Ensures clear street access for snow removal, emergency services, and town maintenance, and improves curb appeal with organized off-street parking. Without this variance, we would be forced into either code violations or unsafe parking situations, which this approval avoids. Next item up is a four-foot fence within the sight triangle exceeding the three-foot limit. The existing fence is a PVC vinyl semi-open and scalloped, allowing full visibility for drivers and pedestrians. Its height reaches four feet at the tallest points, but drops to three feet at the lowest points, reducing any obstruction in critical sight lines. Additionally, a similar white PVC four-foot fence exists at apartment complex at Connectwood Avenue and Jefferson Street, demonstrating neighborhood consistency as large property owners, the apartment complex would be expected to comply with town code, supporting the presidency for, precedent for PVC vinyl fence at this height. Importantly, there's a local bus stop at this corner and the fence helps guide pedestrians traffic to the sidewalk rather than the street or the front lawn, which enhances safety and reduces the potential for litter or debris on the property. Overall, the fence improves safety and aesthetics, prevents encroachment onto the yard, and remains consistent with prior approvals and the neighborhood. Finally, the detached garage, this is a proposed 18 by 30 with reduced setbacks. Due to the small lot size and the existing setback requirements, a variance is required regardless of the size of the garage that could be built. The requested structure replaces the existing six-foot by six-foot shed that is currently on the property. This consolidates storage into one clean compliant structure, avoids multiple outbuildings on a very constrained lot. It's intended primarily for storage, not daily vehicle use, and access will be from the Connectwood Avenue side only when needed, similar to how a contractor or landscaper might remove a section of fencing to actually gain access into the side yard. There is also historical precedent. During the March 21, 1972 public hearing for the original construction of the home, a neighbor... Oh, I'm sorry. Do you need me to repeat anything?
No.
No. I'm, I'm a little nervous. There's also historical precedent. During the March 21, 1972 public hearing for the original construction of this home, a, a neighbor objected to the variance due to the lack of a garage in the proposal, stating that there is no garage.
We get, we don't have to go back to hearing 50 years ago.
Okay.
So we're good. Anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay. Question, what do you do for a living?
I am, I work in risk management, so I assess risk.
I think you did a better job than half the attorneys we saved.
Thank you, sir.
One of my concerns, though, we'll ask Nick, is you have very narrow piece of property.
Yes, sir.
And, but you want us to treat it like it's three times size and you can't. Your variance for the detached garage is, what is that? How, I don't have...
18 by 30.
18 by 30. And it should be 10 foot and you're proposing a what, how many foot, six feet instead of
A four-foot setback, I believe.
Four foot instead of, I don't know, Nick, what does he need on the back and the sides? I just think it's...
The side is six instead of 20, right?
Well, it's because it's a front yard.
No, so what he's requesting is six instead of 20 for the front yard, because the Connectwood Avenue there is a secondary front for him. And he's asking for four on the rear and four on the side. Really, this is mostly a function of the fact that the garage is just bigger, so it's over 500 feet. I think it's 540, if my math is correct, 18 by 30. If it was smaller, even just like 60 or so feet smaller, he wouldn't even need a rear and side yard setback at all. Four feet would be what is conforming. So at least in that sense, a good amount of his issues could actually be resolved by just making a, about 50 square foot smaller garage.
Did you hear that? Should we bring the garage down to 16 by 40?
16 by 40? No, no, no.
No. I, I would say that he should probably reduce it in terms of the, the width there. So if it was, for instance, 18 by 26, if he brought it in four feet, the side and rear yard would both conform. And he would be asking for 10 instead of 20 on the front, which is maybe, you know, justifiable considering the fact that it's a 40-foot wide lot to begin with. That's...
So you think 18 by 26 is doable?
Um, in the sense of the construction of, you know, what they're asking for, although I have some other questions about the garage in the sense that I don't really see how it's functioning as a garage. There's no, there's no noted way here that a car actually will access it.
Yeah, how would you get a car there?
There, there's nothing there right now. This is a proposal.
Right, but how would you get a car?
It's not used for, it would be primarily used for storage.
It's not really a garage. Okay.
Well, if, if I get a boat at some point, basically...
Well, do you, do you use a gate, you have a gate on the survey drawing onto Connectwood? Does that, does that exist now?
No.
Okay.
Because, yeah, he's right. There's a shown a gate. There's no driveway over there, but that would certainly be my concern, is you build a garage over here, now you're driving over the curb and the grass and the sidewalk to get to your garage at the back through the gate that is shown on the survey.
So, Nick, let me ask you a question. Let's call it hypothetically an accessory structure.
Sure.
Then I think he's got more problems.
No, it would be the same. Accessory structure setbacks are identical. You mean in terms of the variance request or in terms of... The variance request would be identical, so everything I said before would be still true. It doesn't matter if it's called a detached garage or an accessory storage building in that sense. Really, it's only called a detached garage versus a storage building in terms of the use, which is what my questioning was.
What is the size structure, whether we call it a garage or an accessory structure? What is the size that would be in striking range?
Again, yeah, if they just get under 500. So I think 18 by 26, what would that be? I think I wrote it down somewhere. Maybe I didn't.
But Nick, we don't get past the access issue. There's no way you can't get to it.
That's more of a question in terms of what it's being used for than I had, because...
Right, for storage, they don't need that.
Presumably, yeah, a garage would mean that it's supposed to be housing a vehicle and he certainly can't make it past his house through the driveway there. There's no proposed driveway, so it was unclear to me what the actual intention was with the building.
So you meant...
Well, if it helps, I, I would like to restore a classic car and the space there would help. But like I said, it's not going to be an active driveway. The restore project would probably take me, because of my day job, probably...
But how are you getting it into the garage? I, I don't see how you're fitting it past your house.
So we had a tree removed and the way that the landscapers did, they, they removed one panel of fencing. They brought in the equipment, did the job, left, and then put up the panel. So what I would do is remove the panel, pull the car into the garage.
I don't think that's getting you where you want to...
Nick, can you pull up street view and I'll...
Okay.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Can't see it.
So we'd, we'd like to pull up the street view to help explain, but it's blurred, I guess.
I provided pictures and...
Is there like an overhead garage bay door proposed on this structure?
I'm sorry?
Is there, so is there an actual, like, let's say, eight-foot-high garage door that's going to be on this structure?
I, this is all planning, so whatever you guys tell me I could build is probably what I'm going to go with. If you approve it. If you don't, I guess I just move on.
So what the board's concerned about is it's obviously a decent-sized structure, right? So you've now mentioned a classic car and a boat, and you say you'll, you'll simply remove a fence like a contractor or a landscaper would when your tree was removed.
Yeah.
However, but we also have to speak for the town and you can't drag these heavy things over a curb and a sidewalk to get into your yard from Connectwood Avenue. First of all, it's, it's not even safe, right? Because how long would it take this vehicle of maneuvering back and forth until it managed to get over the curb, over the sidewalk, and into your yard?
Okay.
So you're not proposing to construct a curb cut or a driveway apron on Connectwood Avenue?
No.
I think that complicates it a bit.
I mean, if it helps, I'll, I'll add that. I don't, I mean...
That's the question. Is that your intention or are you planning to eventually put a driveway there?
My intention is to get an accessory structure because I'm running out of storage. It's a small house, a small lot. My shed is currently jam-packed and I'd like more space.
To store what, though?
Loan equipment.
Classic car.
I would like to do a classic car eventually.
Well, let me ask you this way, Nick, what is grandable, if anything?
In terms of just pure area variance, as I said, an 18 by 26 one, not too much smaller than what he's currently doing, eliminates two of the needed variances and makes the front yard 10 instead of 20. In terms of the, the overall lot size, I actually don't think that's completely unreasonable. It's more of a concern not of the area variance, but of what it's being utilized for and how he's accessing it. Because as Mary pointed out, I don't want to see somebody trying to back up a boat on Connectwood Avenue to get into their garage over the curb.
Well, we can't deny it because we think he's going to use it as a problem.
I don't know.
And we...
But it says garage. That's the issue.
Right, well, then...
It's not clear how it's going to be a garage.
A, a amend the call to accessory structure.
Well, he's gonna have to make that application.
Possibly.
So if we amend the call to call an accessory structure and grant 18 by 26, a lot of his issues are behind him.
Assuming that changing it from a garage to just an accessory structure means he couldn't have like a garage bay door that he could put a vehicle into, it probably would eliminate the being concerned.
Well, it's just for storage. So you'll have to put a garage door on. So you'll have to put a garage door on it.
And then get through the classic car.
Yeah, the classic car is going to have to wait.
Okay.
So it's only allowed a man door? That's, are you, are you agreeing to that, just a, a man door to get in?
It could be a woman door.
No, they're called men doors.
I mean, if that's what you, okay, so I honestly don't know how this whole process goes. If that's what you're limiting me to, I don't have to go forward, right?
We don't want it to, we don't want it to be used as a garage.
That, okay.
Correct, you do not have to go forward.
Okay.
You don't have to go forward, we're trying to meet you somewhere where we can agree, but if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Maybe you have to go back and talk to planning and see what will work.
No, no.
My, are you in a rush?
No, I'm not in a rush, but I'd, so-
My, my thought process is, is your intention was to use this as a garage.
I would like to, yes, I would like to-
Whether it were a restored car or whatever. And now that that's not going to be in the car, it's now kind of like, oh, I don't know what I need.
Right, right, I could just build, what am I limited, a twelve-by-twelve shed, but, okay. The problem is, I've sunk so much money into this already between the surveys, you don't hear, but it's- But if you're saying that I'm not going to be able to put a garage in because of Connect Quad, I mean- Okay. Okay.
Want to adjourn and think about it? Which is what you're doing for the, for the, uh, what you're not proposing to do, you said?
Yeah, that number sounds very high, but as I was saying, he's got forty feet of width here, and I actually tend to agree with him on this point where he was saying that he kind of needs this as a minimum in order to fit two cars side by side. He has a corner property next to a very busy road, so I, I think it's very reasonable. We don't want him parking on the street. That, that's probably, that part's probably not justified, but the, the front yard occupancy, I think, is considering the circumstances.
So the front yard occupancy, we can explain with that? And the site triangle?
I don't really see the justification for it.
Could, I'm sorry, can you explain what a site triangle is?
Basically, the, the section of your fence that's really close to where your driveway is-
Okay, so it's not the corner?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like a tri, well, it is literally a triangle. It's hard to really explain, if I'll be honest, it's much more easy to visualize. But basically, you take the, the edge of your driveway and you go back like sixteen feet from the street, and then you're supposed to form a triangle. The important part here is that it's not the entirety of your fence. It's just the part closest to the driveway is considered a safety hazard because it might obscure somebody's view of somebody pulling out.
And that's on the west side of the, where?
Uh, yeah, I believe so.
It should be east.
I don't actually have the front-
You're correct, there are two different types of site distance triangles. There's a corner site distance triangle and a driveway site distance triangle. So this is not the corner formed by Rockaway and Connect Quad.
Okay.
Correct?
Uh, yeah, it's, really, it's called that as a driveway one.
Called a driveway site distance triangle.
Correct.
So it's really only where your cars are close to your neighbor's property.
Okay.
And you're not supposed to, you're supposed to be able to bat out and see above three feet.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You've got a scalloped fence, so it should be down.
Okay.
So what do you want to do now that we have those coming together?
I would like some guidance on how to proceed, so the garage is out of-
The garage is out of five.
Okay, so the accessory structure max would be?
Under five hundred feet.
Yeah, that's the, your target should be, under five hundred square feet. That takes it from a ten-foot setback to a four-foot setback.
Okay.
It's a big difference for you in that sense, especially because you have the limited space with the width here.
Okay.
So you're only like forty, forty-one, because you're supposed to be under five hundred, not exactly. You're only about forty-one square feet in your proposal, larger than what would, I have a decent chance of working in terms of an accessory structure more generally.
Okay, um, yeah, that's it, I guess. Okay, yes, sir. Thank you, have a good night.
I hope somebody is here on the application of six oh seven dash twenty-five Esperanza Fuentes Paez and Estela Reyes Fuentes. Okay, so that was adjourned from October fourteenth of twenty twenty-five, and my notes say that we pick November eighteenth for the second appearance, so I think I- Application number, are we good at seven o'clock, right, everybody?
Do you want to close?
Yeah, we have a recall.
Oh, has, has there been any arrival on the application of Anthony Caldera Junior? God, I can't believe he didn't come. Application number six eighty-eight dash twenty-five Juan and Gloria Reyes. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isletown Code Section sixty-eight dash six oh two, to leave two roofed-over patios, twenty-three-point-two by twenty-four and twelve by twenty-three-point-five, having front yard of four-point-five feet instead of required arterial highway setback of forty feet, to leave two sheds having five feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required twenty feet, six-foot fence on property line not having required setback of ten feet, and driveway having side yard of three feet instead of required four feet. Residence B District, southwest corner of Blacker Street and Islep Avenue, Brentwood.
Uh, good evening, panel, judges. I'm a little under the weather, I'm, so I'm going to try my best. Don't want to take up your time, but I just want to say-
Can you start by giving us your name and address?
Oh, yes, Vincent Hickey, Victory Expediting, six oh six Johnson Avenue, Suite twenty-five Bohemia, New York one-one-seven-one-six. Um, the reason why I'm here tonight, um, just to make it short, I don't feel so good, but I'm trying to reestablish the accessory apartment that was established, if I'm not mistaken, way back two thousand seventeen, but they let it expire, so we had to like redo it over again. Um, I think there's two roof overs. I don't know what the setback is or the variance from the house to the street, one-eleven. Um, the other thing, the driveway, the driveway was like, the driveway, he had it cut out like four, four driveways, but we cut it back down to two with an apron. Um, basically, if there's anything else that we're hoping that you can grant, you know,
Um, sure, so start with, really, the thing that stands out here the most to me is the, the roof over patios with the arterial highway setback. This is, um, that's obviously a big request, although I guess, I'll say two things about it. Arterial highway setbacks can be pretty harsh for people, but even if there wasn't the case here, they still would have needed fifteen. And this is a very long, large area of roof over patio coming off of their dwelling. It's, it seems to me that they could cut it back and still have a pretty sizable amount of space for a roof over patio area, even if they did cut it back. Um, for instance, if they cut it back to, you're kind of saying there is, looks like there's two separate ones, so there's the twenty-three by twenty-four one, and then there's another one kind of going further that's twelve by sixteen. Even if they were just to, you know, take it back to the twenty-three by twenty-four one, I think that would be far more reasonable.
Twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah, the, the dimensions of the, the overhead roof with pavers. So the one that's closest to that dwelling itself-
Closest to the house.
The larger section of roof over.
Okay.
As opposed to the, the one that gets closer to Islep Avenue there.
Right.
Um, I don't have any issue with the driveway.
Okay. He cut everything back, four feet from his next-door neighbor. I think more than that, more than four feet.
And-
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
This is another case where I don't really think the six-foot fence is justified, nor would it be justified if we were to go through with the changes that I had mentioned before. It still wouldn't really meet the criteria, so I don't really have much else to say about that, and I'm not sure I have much else to say about the application either.
All right, so just getting back to the, uh, we've got, not yet. You have front yard.
Yeah.
You want to add, so, if they, you say if they knock down the twelve by twenty-three?
I don't know what that number is exactly. I think it's probably close to twenty-seven or so, but I, I couldn't say that with complete confidence. I don't have a ruler in front of me right now. I also, to be fair to them, I'm not actually sure that the roof over part of it itself is at four-point-five. I think the roof over part of it's more like fifteen away, and then there's just more pavers that go closer that isn't roofed over. So I think that's kind of, I think the call of the meeting might be a little-
Is it, is it possible, if I can, is it possible if they can keep the one closest from the house out?
Certainly, that's what I would think would be the reasonable compromise.
That's what he was suggesting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the twenty-four by twenty-three-point-three-one, I think, is far enough away from the road that it's, it's not unreasonable for them to keep that one. And it's-
It's really more like a gazebo, but, you know, that's closer to Islep Avenue, it's more like a gazebo, right?
Right.
It's just bottom against the-
The roof over.
So that's the one he's suggesting you renew.
The gazebo and this way?
Closer down.
Yeah, from that point towards the roadway, but keeping the one closer to the house.
I got it.
Just out of curiosity, for clarification, how do we, on the call, if we strike the reference to the twelve by twenty-three, having a front yard of what, you can use quickly to set it up?
Uh, again, I don't have a ruler or anything, I couldn't tell you the exact number.
It wasn't fifteen. We shouldn't have him on serve the residence B, seven.
Uh, yeah, that would be fifteen, you'd be right on that, but, like I said, I, I actually think the, what I guess you were referring to is gazebo, it's more than four-point-five away.
That's, that's why I'm kind of confused.
Yeah, it's, it's the roof over patio, but only part of the patio is roofed over, I guess, so it's, it's being called out at four-point-five, but the actual roof over is further away?
But patio didn't need to have forty feet, I guess, probably.
Uh, two sheds having five feet behind the front line of the lawn, those sheds, can you move those two sheds?
Yes, he can move them.
Those being in compliance?
Yes.
Okay. And the six-foot fence on property line not having required setback, ten feet?
Okay. That six-foot fence you're talking about?
Yeah, we got to bring that in.
Ten feet?
Four, we do see the four.
Okay, I got, I have a question. On the accessory apartment, you have to renew what, every three years?
Does anyone else like to rehearse this matter? The challenge here is that the survey doesn't show the actual distance on the side yard.
You want us to, you want us to revise that?
We're going to probably, we're going to reserve decision.
Okay.
Try and figure that out.
Okay.
And then come back with a decision on the side yard.
Okay, I mean, if you want us to revise the, uh, the survey, the company, we can do that too.
If we need to, we'll ask.
Thank you, God bless you all. Happy, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
If anybody is here on the application six eighty-nine dash twenty-five, that's been adjourned to an open date. And the next application is application number six ninety dash twenty-five, eighteen-twenty-five Brentwood Road Associates LLC. Permission to install facial sign having area of forty-eight square feet instead of permitted thirty-two square feet. Business one and business three district, northeast corner of Brentwood Road and Second Avenue, through lot to Eighth Street, Brentwood.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Punkashaw, I'm from Sign Company, Signarama, at four-four-nine Hempstead, Tunpike in West Hempstead. And I'm here with Dr. Quach, who is the owner for Brentwood Orthodontics. We are requesting here to get a permit for forty-eight square feet of a sign, facial sign, instead of a thirty-two, which is allowed by the code for the medical facility. Reason of our request is, it's in the shopping center where all of the signs are bigger, and if you put this sign, it's going to look little, or as well, it's hard for visitors to see that and find us. The parking lot is very big over there, so that's the reason we are requesting it. And there are other bigger signs. All of the signs are bigger to the code of regular one.
The only thing planning was potentially even concerned about was whether or not the sign would end up being big enough that it hangs below sort of strip here, which it does not seem to, so, yeah, I think it's consistent with the shopping center.
The sign is not going to come below, right?
No, sir, no, sir.
And then of course, it's going to avoid it. Is anyone else like to rehearse this matter?
Thank you very much, sir. Have a nice evening and happy holidays to everyone.
Application number six ninety-one dash twenty-five John and Margaret Hoon. Permission to direct one-story addition, twenty by twenty-eight point two, irregular. Need insider potential?
Hello, Stephen Burton, Michelle Burton Interiors, Architects and Designers, seventy-six Railroad Avenue in Seville. And this is Meg Hoon, she's the homeowner. So we're looking, we had, sure.
It's, it's very similar to something we heard earlier. They had a slight design change, but the setbacks are exactly the same, that was granted.
Yes, correct. Yes, correct. Great, thank you so much.
Thomas Lotito Revocable Trust, Thomas Lotito trustee. In accordance with the proposed written decision dated November 18, 2025, the application has denied the one-story addition, the shed, and the six-foot fence, and granted the remainder of the application. On motion of?
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Application number 478-25, John and Joyce Felder Trust, Kimberly McCario trustee. In accordance with the proposed written decision dated November 18, 2025, the application has denied the pool deck having the side yard of four feet and granted the remainder of the application, with the two-family families only being for a period of three years. On motion of?
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have an application that's been reserved for a year and a half, and thankfully, the applicant's representative has asked for withdrawal. So that's application number 217-24, JML Construction Corp. At the request of the applicant, the application is withdrawn. On motion of?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's a wrap.